...for February 13th, 2017. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could still please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh my gosh. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first on the agenda tonight are approval of the minutes from our January 23rd, 2017 open session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, will the approval of the minutes for January 23rd, 2017 open session minutes as written with one, one question? Did you, were you, did you vote against the pink color?
I abstained.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't, I was like, okay.
I abstained.
You didn't like that color, huh? Okay, so we're good. That was the only thing I was not sure about.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Different reason for abstaining.
I did.
I got mine ready.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes other than the question on the abstention? Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are good. Okay. Communications and announcements. First up, we have a video presentation from the Council on Aging, a video that was produced here in town. Do we have anybody from the Council on Aging here tonight to talk to us? Oh, come on up, guys. Why don't you sit here at the, the front desk here and give us a quick overview and then what we're going to see and then we'll take a look at the video and what the next steps are.
Good evening.
Hi, Irene.
Hi, hi, everyone. This, this projection was made, we've been working on it for three years and it came about due to the respect we were looking for from our seniors towards each other. There's a lot of bullying that happens at a senior center and people seem very surprised by that. So we, we worked on putting together some scenarios and we got together with not the end of a high school and got some young actresses and actresses to play out the scenarios and then we had some seniors act out the same scenario and showing the outcome and how bullying happens at every age. What we, we really found out was our seniors don't relate to the word bullying, but they do relate very strongly to the word respect. And so that's, that's how this all came out, this all came about. So we have great plans for it. We're going to show it on the cable station naturally. Boston is going to look at it at the Executive Office of Elder Affairs and we're hoping to show it at the conference. So that's where we are. And this is Joe Surje, who is the chairman of our Council on Aging Board.
Hi, Joe. Nice to meet you. So, so we're going to view it tonight and then the next steps are, it will be-
Yeah, we're going to start showing it at the senior center and the high school as well, in the grammar schools as well.
Okay.
And it'll be on cable too, right?
Yes.
After tonight it will be, yes.
Oh, that's true.
And then going forward.
Okay.
Okay. So Brian, are you going to be running the-
Yeah, I'll get started. Because of the speakers in the back, we have to turn up the volume. So give it a beat or two when we end so we don't crank your, your voices through the back of our two lines. Look for a nod for me before you continue to-
No, it's going to speak for a little bit.
Yeah.
If you don't want to be the first, be you.
Thank you.
It'll be Halloween. Where's it going to show? Oh, look at that. Morning, sir.
Bullying is often thought of as an issue for only our youth in the school systems. But I'm here to tell you that that is simply not the case. Bullies come in all shapes, sizes, and ages. The following clip is an example of the parallels seen between the bullies in our schools and the bullies in our senior centers.
Hey, Tommy and Taylor, come here. Thank God I'm not waiting in that line.
Yeah, me either. I'm so hungry.
Oh, sorry. We've actually been waiting here for a while now.
Yeah, do you guys mind going back to your spot and waiting like the rest of us?
Actually, I do mind. We're seniors and you guys are underclassmen.
Yeah, isn't it past your bedtime anyways?
Uh, no, it's 12:00 in the afternoon and it's lunchtime.
You guys don't run this school?
Well, who is next? Just figure it out, guys. Enough with this fighting.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. We're actually next.
Ugh, upperclassmen are so mean.
Come up here, Ellen. Thank God I'm not waiting in that line. I'm so hungry.
Oh, sorry. We've actually been waiting here a long time.
Would you mind go back in line like the rest of us?
Actually, I do mind. I've been waiting forever. Why don't you just be quiet?
You don't run this place.
Well, who is next? Let's figure it out. Enough of this fighting.
Sorry about that. I'm actually next.
God, you guys are so mean.
I know I wouldn't appreciate being talked to like that. Let's take a look at how that scene should have played out.
Hey, Tommy and Taylor, come here. Thank God I'm not waiting in that line.
Yeah, me either. I'm so hungry.
Oh, sorry. We've actually been waiting here for a while now.
Yeah, do you guys mind going back to your spot and waiting like the rest of us?
Oh, sorry. We were just really hungry, wanted to stay with our friends. I guess that was pretty rude. We hadn't really thought about it.
Yeah, we'll just go to the back of the line. I guess we would be pretty mad if someone did that to us while we'd been waiting for a really long time. Sorry, it won't happen again. See ya.
Thanks for understanding. Yeah, no hard feelings.
Next in line, please.
Come up here, Ellen. Thank God I'm not waiting in that line. I'm so hungry.
Oh, sorry. We've actually been waiting here a long time.
Would you mind go back in line like the rest of us?
Sorry, I just wanted to be with my friends. I guess that was being disrespectful. It won't happen again.
Thanks for understanding.
No hard feelings.
Next in line, please.
It's understandable that people might want to sit with their friends at lunch. However, that is not an excuse to be disrespectful or to hurt the feelings of an outsider trying to fit in.
Did you see what Jack was wearing today?
Yeah, it was so ugly.
Yeah, he's so weird. He can- Oh, no, here he comes. He can knock us off.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
Um, sorry, you can't sit here.
Yeah, that's reserved for friends.
Oh, okay. Hi, guys, can I sit here?
Actually, we were just leaving.
Could I sit here? Our group sits here and you're not part of it. Sorry, you're going to have to find another table.
Oh my God, did you see what Grace was wearing today?
Oh, I know it. Wasn't it ugly?
She's so weird. Oh, no, here she comes.
You can't sit with us.
You can't sit here.
Yeah, we were saving this for a friend of ours.
Hello, guys, can I sit with you?
Actually, we were just leaving.
Are you sure I can't sit here?
Our group is sitting at this table and you aren't part of it.
It's always scary being the new kid in town or the new member at the senior center. By allowing the new person or maybe even the outcast to sit with you, you'll be helping someone to feel more welcome in their environment. There's always room for one more person to pull up a chair.
Hey, guys, do you think I could sit here?
Oh, yeah, my friend's actually sitting there, but I can pull over a chair for you.
Yeah, we can totally make some room.
The more the merrier. Thanks, Taylor.
Jack, how do you think you did on the bio test?
Oh, I think I did okay. How about you?
Yeah, I think I did all right, too. Jack, I really like your outfit today. It's very unique.
Thank you. Hey, you guys want to go get some pizza after school?
Yeah, let's go get pizza. Jack, want to come?
I'd love to. Thanks, guys.
All right, I'll see you guys later. I got to class. See you.
Bye, bye.
May I sit here?
My friend is sitting there, but let me pull up a chair for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, we can definitely make room for you.
The more the merrier.
Thank you, Jack.
Grace, how are you?
I'm just fine, thank you, and you?
Great.
Grace, I love your outfit. It's really unique.
Well, thank you so much. My granddaughter picked it out for me.
Would you guys like to play bingo later?
Sure. Grace, would you like to join us?
I'd love to. That sounds like so much fun.
Well, I have to get to my zumba class. See you all later.
Bye.
Bye. See you later.
See you later.
It's all right to disagree with someone, whether it be about politics, religion, or even a popular TV show. But what is not all right is to be disrespectful about someone else's opinions.
And I know I will get free lunch here at school. I know I can do it. That's why I deserve to be president. I like John. I think I'm going to vote for him.
Ha, Leah is so much more cut out for that position.
John's ideas in the lunch program are so much better. We need his leadership.
I don't know. He says a lot of stuff, but there's no way he can actually do any of it.
Listen, pal, John needs to be president. His ideas on research, on recess are so much better.
Are you kidding me? There's no way any of those recess ideas will actually work. Leah will actually pull through on all of her ideas.
You don't know what you're talking about. You should learn about politics before you talk about them. Girls know nothing.
You know what? Your ideas are stupid, Nick, just like John's.
I like Tom better.
That's why I should be in charge.
I like Tom.
I don't think so. I think Leah is much better for the position.
Tom's ideas about the club are so awesome. We need his leadership.
He says a lot of stuff, but he isn't able to do any of it.
Listen, Tom needs to be in charge. His ideas are so much better.
Are you kidding? He couldn't possibly pass any of that. Now Leah, she can do a lot for us.
You don't know what you're talking about. You should learn about politics before you talk about them. Women know nothing.
Jack, your ideas are stupid, just like Tom's.
You may not agree with everyone's opinion, but you have to respect it. Pointing fingers, raising voices, name-calling are unacceptable. Let's see how this situation should have been handled.
And I know I will get free lunch here at school. I know I can do it. That's why I deserve to be president. I like John. I think I'm going to vote for him.
Really? Why do you say that? I was more partial to Leah.
John had really innovative ideas on the lunch program that I really liked.
You're right, those were good ideas. I thought Leah's were good, too.
I think I'm still going to have to vote for John.
I guess we can agree to disagree.
I like Tom better.
I want to be president of that stamp club. I'm the best candidate.
I like Tom. I think I'm going to vote for him.
Really? Why do you say that? I was partial to Ellen.
Tom has really innovative ideas that I liked.
You're right. Your ideas were good, too, but so aren't Ellen's. We can agree to disagree, but everyone will put it to a vote.
Should people get involved when they see someone in distress? Are we so self-absorbed that we can't stop to help out someone who is clearly in need?
You guys seen that kid Tommy? He's such a nerd.
I know. He's such a teacher's pet. No wonder why he has no friends.
Oh, crap, here he comes.
I bet it would be pretty fun to mess with them. Hey, everybody, watch this.
What's up, loser?
Hey, we're all your friends. Oh, wait, you don't have any. Should we have done something?
No way. It's not our problem. You don't want them to start bullying us next.
That Grace is always taking up too much space. She gets in our way.
I wish she would wait until after we got hours. Should we help her out?
I don't know. I'd like to get my lunch before it cools down.
Standing by and watching someone be bullied or someone in need of help is just as bad as being the bully. Speak up and help someone when you see they are in need.
Have you guys seen that kid Tommy? He's such a nerd.
I know. He's such a teacher's pet. No wonder why he has no friends.
Oh, crap, here he comes.
I bet it would be pretty funny to mess with them. Hey, everybody, watch this.
What's up, loser?
Hey, we're all your friends. Oh, wait, you don't have any. Hey, I think you guys should stop. It's really mean and unnecessary.
Yeah, he's done nothing to you. There's no reason for you to be mean to him.
We didn't mean it. We just thought it'd be funny. I guess you're right. We'll stop.
I feel bad. I'm sorry.
It's fine. It happens all the time.
I'm sorry, too, man.
Even though they apologized, I still think what they did was really mean. I'd be pretty upset if someone did that to me while I was walking to class.
Yeah, I bet Tom's feelings are still pretty hurt. That probably happens to him a lot. Maybe we should go report it to guidance so that they can address it.
I think that's a good idea.
Do you see Grace over there? She's back here for lunch today. Do you think she's going to be all right?
I think we should wait a while and see how she does.
Okay, it sounds like a good idea.
What happens if she drops the tray while we're standing here watching her? Don't you think that would be embarrassing?
I don't know. Why don't we just go up and offer to help?
Okay. Let us help you. Okay. Let us help you.
Let me get that.
Choosing to be kind, helpful, polite, and respectful can go a long way. If everyone worked together, we can make a better community for our kids in the schools, our seniors at the senior centers, and everyone in between.
Thank you for sharing that with us and good luck with the, the next steps in publishing that and getting that message out. I think it's an important message people need to hear and it's certainly told in two very different perspectives. I mean, one that's very traditional, that we always think of bullying in schools, and then one that, you know, obviously we don't think about in our senior center, our senior citizens. So thank you for bringing that up.
The thing that's interesting, even though this was all planned and staged, it's still painful to watch. I mean, it was funny, but you just, it's like, wow, how could people be so cruel? But it is, it's painful to watch and we're not even the ones who are experiencing it. So it's, it's really interesting. It's, it's a great-
It has a great message.
Yeah.
I work with a large population of elderly, so I see it. I see exactly what you, you just showed there. And there was some humor in it. You know, you want people to smile a little through it, too, but I agree with Rosemary. But a little bit of it, you're like, ooh. Like, you feel, you know? It's great. It's great.
The kids really got into it, too. They, they really had a hard time believing that bullying happens in the senior-
Oh, yeah.
But it really does.
Yeah, it does. People are people are people, you know? Whether they're seventeen or eighty-seven.
I can definitely say that they love doing the mean scenes because they're all out of character.
Yeah, it's true.
Swedish people, Swedish kids, the most-
It's true.
But they, they love doing the mean ones. It was fun.
And Dorothy was the best master of sound moles because she worked in a high school and now she works and helps out at the senior center. So she truly, you know, had an understanding of both issues, probably.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Irene.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Jeff Goldstein talking or giving us some information about a proposal for a cannabis cultivation facility. If you guys could come up and introduce yourselves and talk us through this presentation.
Actually, my name's Tom Lee. I'm going to be presenting to you today. I, I'm a senior partner at 451 Marketing in Boston and I represent Ozzy Properties on this regarding the future development of Osgood Landing. I'm joined by Jeff Goldstein, who's in the back here. Ozzy Properties VP of Commercial Real Estate, Ellen Keller, who's in the second row. Facilities Manager, Robert Bartley. And Ozzy Properties Legal Counsel, Adam Barnoski. I'm a North Andover resident. I've been an active member of the community since I moved here in 2002 with my pregnant wife, Krista, when she was pregnant with our first daughter, Faith. We lived on Herrick Road for 12 years. Kids went to Thompson School and we recently, a few years ago, moved up to Woodcrest Drive. Oldest now is an eighth grader. She's in the middle school. The other two now attend Kettridge. They both, all three of them participate in town sports, basketball, soccer, lacrosse, track. I've been a coach in town here for, for the past 10 years, both with the soccer program and NASA and, and with basketball through the Booster Club.
Thanks for your service.
Yeah. Thank you. And I've been an ardent supporter. I actually just joined the board, the Booster Club Board last year, been an ardent supporter of the YMCA, the, the Youth Center, NASA, et cetera. Like everyone here in North Andover, I've been keenly aware of and interested in the development of Osgood, of Osgood Landing. I've followed the coverage over the years with all the different possibilities. And when Jeff Goldstein first walked me through this presentation that we're going to see today, I quickly realized that it wasn't something I'd ever contemplated. This really was the perfect solution for this property, for the manufacturing part of the facility. An indoor agricultural facility designed specifically for cultivating cannabis. Before I go through this presentation, I'm going to breeze through this real quick. I know you've had a chance to, to see it, hopefully. I just want to see if we have any time constraints. I know you have a pretty packed agenda, so-
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to keep it between, you know, the presentation, 10, 15 minutes if you can.
Yeah.
I think, you know, a lot of the site history we're familiar with. If you've got some bullet points that you want to emphasize there, but I know, you know, most of us are very familiar with state history, so I think we can-
Okay.
Let's get to it.
Great, yeah. Hopefully, we'll be able to answer most of your questions in the presentation and I'll leave plenty of time at the end to, to answer questions. So we're here today to lay out the details of proposed usage and discuss drafting of two separate warrant articles. The first would expand the medical marijuana overlay district to include Osgood Landing and remove the current size restrictions on a facility that will cultivate, process, and/or research marijuana. The second would authorize the town manager and Board of Selectmen to negotiate a host community agreement with the owner of the medical marijuana cultivation facility. As you know, 1600 Osgood Street is, has a rich 60-year legacy, has a manufacturing facility in Merrimack Valley. It was first developed by Western Electric. Since purchasing, purchasing it from Lucian in 2003, Ozzy Properties has invested over 15 million in improvements and worked tirelessly to identify suitable uses of this landmark property. As of today, Osgood Landing is being operated as a multi-use commercial property hosting various business, businesses that employ roughly 1,000 people. And as you know, they recently reached an agreement with Osgood Solar to develop a $12 million solar array on the site. The truth is, 1600 Osgood Street is not being used to its fullest potential. The property is a 1.8 million square foot of extraordinary manufacturing warehouse and office space. Facility is best suited for large-scale manufacturing. For the past 14 years, Ozzy Properties has explored multiple ideas to develop this massive property, commercial, residential, manufacturing, recreational, you name it. Various factors in the market, together with the property's unique characteristics and location, have forced the owners to go back to the drawing board on multiple occasions. Today, only 10% of the property's 1.1 million, million square feet of prime manufacturing space is actually being utilized. So what are the most feasible options for the property? Option one, status quo. Owners will continue to develop the property as a mixed-use facility and continue to seek out new tenants. The drawbacks of this option include modest development and revenue growth for the town and continued underutilization of prime manufacturing space. Option two, freight and logistics. The owners have been approached by several interested parties that are looking to build out warehouse logistics and drop-ship facilities at the site. Drawbacks to this option include low rent per square foot, modest revenue growth for the town, limited low-wage jobs, and significantly increased truck traffic. Option three, an indoor agricultural facility designed specifically for cultivating cannabis. With over a million square feet of manufacturing space, more than ample power, and high-end HVAC systems, the site is perfectly suited for this purpose. Since the recent changes in state law concerning marijuana, the owners have been approached by several US and European companies that are interested in using the space for this burgeoning industry. The cannabis industry is still in its infancy. The first ones to market have the opportunity to take a key leadership role in the development and growth of the state's newest industry. There's been a dramatic shift in public attitudes towards medicinal and recreational use of marijuana. Last November, Massachusetts and four other states legalized recreational marijuana. In total, 28 states and Washington DC have legalized the use of medical, medicinal marijuana and eight states in Washington DC have legalized the use of recreational marijuana. More than 60% of the US population now has access to medicinal marijuana and more than 20% has access to recreational marijuana. Massachusetts has established rigorous regulations regarding the growth and distribution of medicinal marijuana and is currently working on those regarding recreational cannabis. There's a limited window for licensed cannabis cultivators to identify and establish viable cannabis grow facilities. Colliers International estimates that based on the Colorado experience, the greater Boston region alone could see as much as 3.4 million square feet of industrial real estate occupied by cannabis cultivation. There are cultivation sites existing or in development in nine communities. Amesbury, Ayer, Quincy, Fitchburg, Franklin, Lowell, Brockton, Georgetown, and Milford. There are 97 dispensaries with provisional approvals. Of those, 11 have final approval and nine are open for sale. In Essex County alone, there are nine dispensaries with provisional approvals in the following communities. Salem, Georgetown, Lowell, Danvers, Gloucester, Merrimack, Amesbury, and Ipswich, and two with site approvals in Methuen and Lynn. There's a significant demand for additional cultivation sites. As a result, cities and towns are receiving significant financial benefits for hosting cultivation facilities. After decades of unregulated cultivation of cannabis, the new regulated marijuana industry has become a leading innovator in indoor agriculture. Modern legal cannabis cultivation employs cutting-edge technologies and techniques for environmentally sustainable agriculture, minimizing the use of water and energy and maximizing the power of plant biology to naturally control pests and fungus. Because of the design of the infrastructure, Ozzy and the town could be the first to market with a large-scale, high-tech cultivation space, allowing the town to capture significant benefits as a host community. What does this all mean for North Andover? As you can see, since Lucian left, tax revenue from the site has dropped significantly from roughly a million in annual taxes to roughly a third of that. By fully utilizing 1600 Osgood Street's potential again, the tax revenue for the town would potentially return to, if not exceed, the levels it enjoyed when Lucian occupied the building. Besides the obvious financial benefits to the town, what other impacts will this have? Since cannabis cultivation will not require heavy tractor-trailer trucks, there will be minimal traffic implications. Osgood Landing is already a highly secured facility and sits across the street from the the North Andover Police Department, so there would be no negative impact to public safety. The new use would create thousands of high-quality skilled and non-skilled jobs. As an indoor agricultural facility, it will have zero impact on the environment. Cannabis cultivation will require, will not require any additional public services from the town of North Andover beyond what is currently being provided at the site. The town has an opportunity to negotiate a host community agreement that would allow an annual set fee to the town based on the per-square-foot usage for permitted and operating growth space. For example, a rate of $2 per square foot could mean an additional $2 million in annual revenue to the town. This slide up here lists examples of community host agreements for cannabis cultivation sites. These are significantly smaller. Most of them are cultivation-only sites in Littleton, Medway, New Bedford, and Lester. I have copies of the proposed draft of the warrant article. Would you like to see them now, or is it best to hand it out after? As I mentioned earlier, in order to pursue the potential creation of an indoor agricultural facility at Osgood Landing, the owners would like to work closely with the town to draft two warrant articles that will be presented to residents at the annual town meeting in May. The first would expand the medical marijuana overlay district to include Osgood Landing and remove the current size restrictions on a facility that will cultivate, process, and/or research marijuana. The second would authorize the town manager and board of selectmen to negotiate a host community agreement with the owner of the medical marijuana cultivation facility. Town in North Andover has a unique opportunity here to return to its agricultural and manufacturing roots with this property. By approving the development of this landmark site into a state-of-the-art indoor agricultural facility designed specifically for cultivating cannabis, the town can create a significant and sustainable source of income for generations to come. We look forward to working closely with you on this, and we intend on hosting open town, community meetings in order to receive any feedback and work closely with members of the community who are interested in it. Thank you for your time.
How many square feet of the building are you proposing as a cultivation?
The potential, the potential square footage is 1.1 million, roughly.
I mean, that's the whole building.
That's the manufacturing.
The big part of the building, yeah.
The manufacturing part of the building, yes.
So both floors up and down?
Correct, correct.
That's all that'll be in that building then?
Well, no, there's another, there's another 800,000.
The front part?
Square feet. So you've got office space and you have storage space that could potentially be used for research and laboratories. But this is something that would be developed over time. It's not going to happen overnight.
Who would own the facility?
So the facility will still be owned by Aussie Properties.
So Aussie Properties will own this?
Correct.
How many, about how many jobs are you, you said thousands?
Yeah.
Could you define?
So if it's just on the operation itself, we're looking at, and I don't have the exact number, but it's roughly between 2 and like 2,500 jobs that would be created by the property.
What exactly would they be doing?
Everything from the actual farming, the cultivation, to the research, to just every aspect of the operation.
My other question is, what about demands on water supply? That's something that would take, I was going to ask too, like what about the water supply? How do you cultivate this without putting a drain on our natural resources here in town?
So I'll let my colleagues help me with this answer, but the way, the way it works is they, there's very little wastewater because most of it's recycled. So there's minimal wastewater through the process. So they've, they've developed processes now where they, there actually is a filtration system and they reuse the water as it goes through, goes through the plants and is recycled through.
But still, that's a sizable facility. But still, an estimate on how much, though?
I don't have the answer.
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
Most of the water is recycled. There's no outside air going in. The air is recycled. CO2 is actually in to the facility. Probably in the range of about 100,000 gallons a day brought in. And as we see, if one looks at the recycling, one might need 20,000 to 30,000 gallons a day. About 70% of the water is recycled.
So. So 100,000 gallons of water a day. Will be used, but about 30,000 gallons fresh a day. Yeah, that'd be helpful, actually.
One of the groups we're working with is the Volcani Institute. Which is the R&amp;D arm of the Israeli Department of Agriculture.
Can you just give your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Jeff Goldstein. I'm one of the principals. And Volcani Institute is, has, one of the things they're looking at is, and one of the things that's always of interest in Israel, is low water use and efficient water use. And much of that is, for those of you that aren't aware of this, I was shocked, but Israel has the largest IP in the world for cannabis and medical cannabis uses. THC was first discovered there, the CBDs, many of the medical uses, all of the hospitals have existing research agreements. They've expressed an interest in working with us at our site.
That's great. Can we go back to the water, though?
Probably about in the range of around 30,000 gallons a day. New water input.
Of new water. From where? Brought in or Lake of Chickewake?
Neither. We could either have, you know, from the town, or we also have opportunities for wells. We'll have to look at both.
You do?
Yeah. Lucent had many wells in the site.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yes.
Because 100,000, even 30,000, you know, this summer was a rough summer.
Right.
You couldn't water your lawn. I don't think the town would, just saying, if you're siphoning off.
Yeah.
Maybe 100,000, you say 30,000. Numbers are never right until it's up and running and you actually know. So let's say 50,000 gallons a day. You can't do that when we're in a drought if you're pulling off a Lake of Chickewake. You can't do that, really, I don't think, period, off a Lake of Chickewake, but I don't know.
So in part of your business model, you would need to identify.
Either, either, we'd need to, exactly. We need to identify another source of water for this. Either well, bring in, or the town.
So we don't know how you're actually going to grow it at the moment, then? Because you don't have that, that information. Do you think maybe you'd have it by? I can tell you it's going to be a question at town meeting.
When you say how we're going to grow it, I'm not sure.
Well, you need water. I'm assuming that there'll be. But I think this question will come up and at town meeting, definitely, and people are going to be looking for definitive answers to the questions.
And I thank you for that, and I appreciate that, and I think that's something, an answer we'll have ready for town meeting, so that we have an alternative, that if the town is not able to supply water because of drought conditions.
Or in general.
Or wells, or in general, that we have an alternative water source.
Okay.
So that we don't burden the town. I mean, the whole idea of this is to develop something sustainable that's a benefit to the town, creates jobs, revenue.
Right, right.
And doesn't use natural resources.
Many of the farms in town had wells and used wells.
Right, we would probably, we would do the same.
When you talk about jobs, what could you give me some information on approximately, like what these jobs will be paying? Because a facility like that, you certainly wouldn't have entry level, having high school kids working at a facility like that. I would think not, but.
No, not high schools kids. You'd have to be at least 21 to work there.
Usually, the farming industry tends to be, you know, a manual labor-type wage.
Right.
So you talk about all these, these great jobs, but.
Well, we looked at this carefully, and the, this is not really an agricultural job. It's a factory job. It's a production job.
You're not going to tell us this is a manufacturing facility, I hope.
Oh, in fact, it is. They run through seven or eight crops a year through there, and the, the people working there are actually highly skilled. They're working in the horticultural industry. We'll have to actually go to and develop training programs because we don't have the training facilities for workers right now. So the type of workers who work in production, if one looks at the greenhouse industry, for example, in Holland, or in, you know, in area, in Canada, you know, for example, where there's a fairly large greenhouse industry, many of your tomatoes perhaps come from there. These jobs will pay, they're not minimum wage jobs, so the production workers might pay, you know, $20 an hour or more. These are people with insurance, with benefits. This is not seasonal work. And these are individuals that are skilled and one wants to, you know, to keep them and pay them well and have them there. The other part is, is a fair amount of management, administrative, compliance, and scientists, researchers.
But I would think those would be more in the minority, that you'd really be, as you said, these would be.
But the production workers would be, you know, well-paid jobs. It would be similar to what one might have earned if one had worked for Lucent in production. With full benefits, insurance, it's not a, when one thinks of an agricultural job, one thinks of a migrant farm worker, sort of Grapes of Wrath. This is not that at all. This is a, you know, 365-day-a-year job. Even, in fact, some of the logistics groups that came to us, one of the things that concerned us about this is the logistics companies have, I mean, we live in town also, so, you know, it's, we didn't relish hundreds of trucks coming through, but the, many of their jobs are seasonal, that they need, starting around September, October, they have a lot of jobs through January, and then they reduce their workforce by 50% in January. So we weren't, I mean, our workforce is very different. These are valued employees, skilled, that we want to keep, and it's a, it's a constant workforce. But it'll be several thousand.
So you're estimating that you'd be paying them about $20 an hour, so they'd be making, what, approximately, what, $38, $40,000 a year?
Probably loaded rate with benefits, probably 50,000 plus.
Well, would, when you include the benefits?
Right, well, that's a loaded rate, yeah.
Right.
Insurance, vacation, sick time.
But without the benefits, you're talking about $38, $40,000 a year?
Yeah.
So you touched on it, what kind of, I've actually been out and went through this once before with Mrs. Goldstein and some others, and I found the whole concept very, very interesting. What I guess I don't understand is, so from, you grow it in a room, and I'm simplifying very Burton Ernie, but, you know, you grow it in a room, and then it has to go over to like the factory where you pack it up?
Well.
And then what happens? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know the processes. I understand that this would be basically a growing facility. Okay, I get that. But then what happens after you grow it?
It would go to, first of all, going in to the way growing facilities, if you've ever been to, let's say, a large horticultural facility, like a tomato greenhouse, one would go in, one would wear sort of a white jumpsuit, booties, gloves, mask, hairnet. You're really working in a sterile environment, a positive-pressure environment, much what one might see in a pharmaceutical plant. The product after its, its process, there are several different processes that it will, it may go through in terms of drying or extraction processes for oils, and then would be taken to a dispensary.
Right. Okay, so you grow it in a room, we cut it down, we pack it up, and then it goes off to dispensaries.
Right.
What kind of traffic? What kind of trucks? What kind of rooms? What kind of security? You know, not, I don't want generalizations. I want how many trucks are going to be coming in and out of the town? Like, you know, what kind of security do you have as these products are being put in to the truck to take it to a retail shop?
Right.
I'm more out of curiosity, I don't mean to add this area.
Sure, of course. No, no, not at all. No, I think that's.
Security is a major issue.
I think that is a major issue and a major concern. You know, it's very funny, you know, when we purchased the facility in 2003, my wife and I weren't allowed in for a year. We didn't have a key. I mean, remember, if you remember, it had a barbed wire fence around it, and the gates and the doors, and we had to be escorted, and it wasn't until we owned it for about a year and a half that we could actually come in and go to our office without an escort. So it was, you know, this facility is set up to be a very, very secure facility, more secure than it is now, and some of those security issues will have to be reinstated. But the, yeah, but in fact, the traffic is very interesting. Because the product doesn't weigh a lot, there's not that much of it, and the way, and one doesn't keep it to dispensaries, they don't keep product there overnight. It's not like one stocks a dispensary for a month. In fact, dispensaries are restocked every day.
Okay.
So, and when the car, from what I've seen in the security industry, we've looked at this, they're not even armored cars, or they're not the armored cars you think of like Brinks and a truck looks like that. They may look like a car or a panel van, or something that's armored with armed guards, but you would never recognize it as like cannabis. It's just, it's, would be something, would be like Joe's Plumbing.
I know, but everybody's going to know what the van is.
It would be very nondescript, blends in, the guys are armed, but not even in uniform.
How many a day?
It depends how many dispensaries there are, so for every dispensary supply, there'd be one. So if we're supplying 10 dispensaries, it would be 10 trucks. If it would be 50 dispensaries. Well, you know, the goal, you know, if one has, you know, 20, 30 dispensaries, then that's what it would be.
Okay, I think you should have those answers, too, for town meeting.
Yeah, the point is, you know.
It's 50 trucks, 50 vans a day, 75 vans a day.
To start with, on the medical, it might be five to 10. For the initial, it might be, you know, five, you know, approximately five, you know, three to five per day. And these are not 18-wheelers.
No, I, I understand, I understand. I mean, I've lived in town my whole life, so I remember the days of thousands of workers at Lucent and, you know, 330, and, you know, when they were coming and going. I get that.
It won't be the same density of workers, it'll be a little less. I mean, Lucent had 13,000. I think, you know, this would be probably fully built out with research. For example, one of the groups that came through was representing federal government, looking to do a lease, you know, federal government needs their own grow sites. We've had, you know, we're not really, to be honest with you, you know, I got off a plane in November, and somebody sent me an email and saying, "Goldstein, we've got to talk to you." And, you know, that's, so I've been sort of learning and developing this as we, as we came along, but the opportunity's there, and, you know, it's sort of, we're a group with a, with a solution, looking for a problem. You know, it's, and, you know, what we needed, the solution was a new industry that comes to Massachusetts. And this is a new industry that got plopped in Massachusetts in November. It's coming. It's, you know, it's going to be here, and it has to be in Massachusetts. We can't export to New Hampshire, or Connecticut, or Rhode Island. It has to be grown here, everything that's used. So Colorado is using about, if one looks at the space under cultivation in Colorado, most of it indoors, is over 6 million feet. Massachusetts, we have a similar demographic. There's going to be about 8 million feet of cultivation space, and there's a lot of activity. We're getting calls every day and interested parties, but I think the real challenge is, rather than just be, we want to be more than a cultivation facility. We want to create higher value. And the reason we started looking at Volcani Institute and a separate group from, from, from Europe, is that the ability to create extractions and to understand this better and understand these products better, so that one can have a desired effect, and not everybody wants the psychoactive intoxication effect. Many people have other benefits and things that they're looking for, that, and where it does help, you know, you know, provide relief for individuals. So as many of you know, I'm a physician, and I worked here in Massachusetts for most of my career. The most common prescription I wrote for 25 years, almost 25 years, was narcotics. Morphine, Oxycontin, Percocet. My patients had cancer and were dying. It was entirely appropriate, never had a problem. The main problems my patient complained about were constipation. Nausea. I had some people who would suffer rather be in pain because of the nausea. And then finally, loss of appetite and further weakness. And so I'm in Israel practicing, I moved my practice to Israel, I practice at Sheba Medical Center, and I'm noticing, I'm writing about a tenth of the amount of narcotics that I used to write. And I'm trying to figure out what's going on, you know, how come Israelis, you know, listen, these are, they complain twice as much as anybody else. They really do. They love to complain, and nobody's really complaining, at least to the extent that I was used to here in the Merrimack Valley, and I think we're kind of stoic compared to Israelis. So the, what I realized my first or second week there, that there was somebody in the hospital, in the, in the cancer center, whose job was to write for medical cannabis. They had it for many years. And they've actually opened it up now, all the physicians can write for medical cannabis, but it's, in fact, patients, it's been very well-accepted, and they've developed, the Israelis, interestingly enough, have developed strains that don't cause intoxication, and that don't cause psychoactive effects. cause intoxication, and that don't cause psychoactive effects. You know, there's a group of people with something called inflammatory bowel disease, they just discovered that people with Crohn's actually have an anti-inflammatory effect from a completely different set of compounds. So, I think where we are in this, in this plant, is very, very, we're just scratching the surface, I think there's gonna be a lot of interest, and Massach, our thinking is that Massachusetts, we're a research hub, we have innovation, we have R and D, we really have this, you know, what we're interested is in grabbing the higher value, we don't want to do what Colorado has done in California, which is have a lot of twenty and thirty thousand foot grow spots, we want to create an international cannabis research institute, we want to fund that, we want to have something that creates high value, something that's, you know, taps into the universities of Massa, in Massachusetts, taps into the medical centers and our research, we have the best research institutions in the world. You know, going to Israel, I, I wound up sort of revitalizing my career, I wound up all of a sudden teaching residents, writing papers, I invented something with two other guys, you know, we're in the process of applying for a patent, it's a very entrepreneurial, innovative society, and Matt, Massachusetts is, when I was in, there recently, I was asked to meet with the governor, he was doing a, a tour, a mission, I think some of you know about, he was on mission there, they didn't realize I was from Massachusetts, they just wanted me to present my research at the hospital, and they, what they did was, I learned that Massachusetts, forty-five percent of the trade with Israel comes through Massachusetts. Massachusetts is Israel's number one trading partner, and Israel right now has the number one, is the leader in intellectual property, coming out of Hebrew University and the Technion, these are top fifty universities with Nobel laureates, so we really have an opportunity to bring this all together and really create something that's really, that the community can be proud of, that will bring scientists, researchers, pharmaceutical companies into our community.
Thank you, I'm gonna fill, we'll fill some questions, I'm gonna, like, ask.
So, I actually have, you know, I think this is a really interesting idea, I think it sounds like a neat concept, and I think that I see a lot of potential, but you're going to be going before town meeting to ask for a zoning change for a particular property, and I think that if you shopped at the market basket in North Andover and wore a shirt that said, "I'm responsible for the Osgood site," you would be stopped every aisle, because I know everybody up here has to run for office, and it is perhaps the number one, if not like the number one or two topic that we get engaged on, which is what's happening with that site, what's the future of that site. And so, my question is though, I mean, I want there to be traffic, I want there to be trucks and cars and everything, because that shows that site is being vibrant, but how does this fit into the overall vision of what's going to happen with that whole property, because part of town meeting is going to be a discussion about much of what you've discussed, but let's be very clear, there's going to be an equal, perhaps more forceful, and if it's not successful at town meeting, this will probably be the reason why, about what, what the future of that site and that corridor is, and I want to know how this dovetails with future development and how we maximize that space to its fullest potential.
I, I, you know, that, that's a very good question, and I think, you know, this facility was built and designed as a manufacturing facility, and when we bought it between two thousand and two thousand and three, Lucent poured probably over a hundred million dollars into the facility, Bart, Barthley, who's that facilities manager here, can verify that, in what they did and created this infrastructure, and then when the internet crashed, Lucent crashed, we purchased the property. So, it's, the highest and best use of the facility is manufacturing, so while we, listen, we've had a lot of plans, we've tried everything, you know, and we've had even other manufacturing companies come through, you know, a lot of them didn't have to come to town meeting for his own chain, for zoning change, so you don't know about them all, you don't know about the group that wanted to come in and do solar panels, we had several of those, they got stolen away from us to Devon's, you, much of you know about Evergreen?
Well, we do, because we went there with Secretary Ash, and we talked, many of us have toured the site more than once.
Right, so, 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 so the, so the highest and best use of the property is as a manufacturing site to create manufacturing jobs in our community, and I think that's what the site will become, and will become a site focused around a single use, high-value manufacturing, which it is, and will be, hopefully be able to bring in the high, and create the high-value industries that are going to be associated with this. So, in addition to just a medical grow, you know, it is, if I had zoning now, I could have a chance of getting a very large group in here that would be, we would all want, but I don't have zoning, and they're probably gonna go somewhere, they may go somewhere else. So, I think that we have to start somewhere, and, you know, we can all complain that it's not some of the things we all wanted it to be, we wanted it to be, we had an idea, we wanted to make housing and retail, we had, the Honeymoon signed up there for a year and a half, we did not have one retail broker or tenant come through, they don't want to be in the site, there's insufficient traffic, it'll never happen.
And that's the response you get, that there's insufficient traffic?
Insufficient traffic in people, they don't want to be there, and interestingly enough, even for the housing, we have five hundred and forty units, we've had them for years, why haven't they been built? Because housing developers come in, they look at the site, they say, "We're looking at a manufacturing building, we're looking at wheel operator and a smoke stack," this is not really, there's no transportation.
Those aren't new, that's, that was part of the zoning change to be...
Understood, we thought, we all thought, in two, when we did the zoning change, that it would have been that this, these were desirable, and this was...
Looking at a manufacturing plant.
Well, we, we had plans to do other things with the manufacturing plant, you know, there aren't any other options, in, in terms of, most of the manufacturers that are out there now, don't want to manufacture in a plant like ours, so the future of that plant, honestly, is a storage facility. It's, it's gonna be basically to rip out that electrical infrastructure, the HVAC infrastructure, and convert it, put in loading docks and convert it to a larger storage facility.
I, I, I want you to just understand what, what, I mean, this is not the four, four or five of us that get to make this decision, you're going to go before town meeting then.
Right, right, but we also need to...
People feel as strong, I mean, and I would, I would recommend to you that there's a compelling case to be made for why this and not, I mean, people have perhaps unfair expectations about what should happen there, but, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
I mean, I don't want to speak for any of my colleagues, I get engaged about this topic as often as Main Street, the, the, Main Street is a different issue, whereas, I mean, the one, one twenty-five corridor, I mean, when people talk about that, they're talking about the, the Osgood landing building.
I, I think it's important as well, I think Selectman De Coligera brings up great points, but I think you need, for, for, while you make an eloquent argument about the, the, and I think the state of Massachusetts is in agreement with you, that there are incredible benefits to cannabis, and all of that, that's great, but when you come to a town meeting in a somewhat still parochial community as well, you both know, you live here, and I don't know if you come to town meeting often, probably don't, it's a tough crowd, it can be a very tough crowd, and they're gonna, going to ask questions like I did, how much water, what kind of traffic, what kind of this, what kind of that, so, for as much as you can try to sell on the benefits, which I think many of us are already in agreement with you on, what you'll face at town meeting will be somewhat different than, it won't be so much up here, it's gonna be more ground level.
Well, and that's where you need a solid business supply.
Right.
And, you know, to your point, that, that building, the manufacturing building is all, has always been the centerpiece of that property, it's never been off the table, it's just been the use for it that's never been designated, so it's always been, you know, the forty-hour overlay district around, it's always been in existence, but that building was, I mean, not in existence, but in the plans, but that building was always the centerpiece, it was never, never off the table, there was always gonna be something that would have to be in that building, so, you know, it, not like it's a diversion from that, it's just...
No, but I, I think that if you're coming to town meeting and you're coming before, for boards in the community, I think it's important that you come with, with what the long-term vision is and how this fits in with that long-term vision, and how it supports growth there, because again, I'm, I'm not concerned about traffic, I mean, we want that, we want that property humming, we want it to be vibrant, I want it creating jobs, we want it to be bad, you know, we, we want, we want you paying into taxes, and frankly, I think the, the host community agreement is, there's a certain appeal to it, like, for me, this has nothing to do with the marijuana piece, and everything to do with, how does this fit in with the, I mean, again, you need a zoning change to tell us that this is gonna open doors for the building, you need to tell the story about why, why this, what, what about this will be that silver bullet that creates this, this vibrant property, but that's what I want to hear.
Thank you.
And I, I think that, again, for, for as many people that adhere to that parochial, you know, we don't want a site like this, I mean, it's great that you're not a dispensary, and that it's simply, you know, cultivation, I mean, I've heard from, from Amesbury, the host, that, you know, you don't even know that it's there, but that, that being said, there's a whole other segment, and I'm sure there's overlap between the two groups that, that want to know what's the future of this property.
Yes.
Right.
You weren't totally clear to me, maybe to everybody else, are you talking about this for pharmaceutical use or recreational use, because you keep talking about the pharmaceutical piece?
Also for the recreational as well, I think, you know, it would be hard to cultivate a million square feet for pharmaceutical alone, I think that it would also be for the recreational, but in terms of the dispensaries, we have no interest in a dispensary at the site, in fact, we've had groups come through and look at the site, and it's very interesting where they're putting dispensaries and where the people who have a dispensary, for the same reason we don't have retail at the site, nobody wants to put a dispensary there, they think it's a, you know, with a grow site, one's given a certain amount of licenses and places one can put dispensaries, so for example, one of the groups has a dispensary across the street from the Loop, next to Burger King, that's where it's sited, we all know that.
Yeah, I know, I did know that.
You know, there's a group that is looking at a place in Lynn that has car counts of eighty thousand, eighty thousand a day. So, we're not a good retail site, nobody wants it for that, I don't want to put a dispensary there, listen...
In fact, you can't put a dispensary, co-located with a cultivation...
Oh, you can actually, yes, yes, in fact, it's encouraged. Right, it's encouraged, we have no interest in, if this, if the town actually, dispensaries actually provide a very large amount of revenue for the host communities, the town may want us to put one there, in which case, you can tell us that, but, you know, it's not something that we would consider doing, you know, it's, people are out there looking for these cultivate, for dispensary zones, and you've had a marijuana district for a number of years, how many people have come and wanted to put dispensaries there?
One.
None, one.
You haven't?
Yeah, I had a...
Yeah, but they never, but they never did it?
You know, that wasn't with us though.
No, right, that wasn't, that wasn't you, that was a client company.
Never, it never came.
Yeah, yeah, they, they actually never, interestingly, they never met with us.
I sat there with Marie and...
Really? Oh.
Yeah, she was in the...
Yeah, I was at that meeting.
How, yeah, okay.
But, you were just landlords, there wasn't...
Yeah, we would have no involvement.
You wouldn't have been involved.
Yeah, but the, you know, and the, the, but it's not, but they didn't, the point is, they never came, so it's, people, individuals are looking for sites, I mean, the first five or ten sites, fifteen sites out there, people were looking for, they'll put it anywhere just to get a site, but the stigma is gone, the stigma is gone, the towns see the tax revenues, it's huge tax revenues, in the bill for recreational is two percent of the revenue.
Which brings me to something else, because you, you talk about it being a manufacturing facility, and then it's kind of referred to as a horticultural facility, you get taxed differently based on farm and based on manufacturing?
This is manufacturing, this is not, we're not applying for any, the state's already made that ruling.
But did, did they get a decreased tax rate for agricultural...
No, 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 absolutely not, the state's already ruled on that, and it's considered manufacturing.
Now, this, this will restrict your ability to develop housing on-site, right? Because you can't have housing within, even if you wanted to, you could have...
Well, we could, but we have no interest in that.
Can it not be within a certain number of feet?
No, no, I, I think it's five hundred feet from where children congregate is the restriction, so it can be...
Well, they live in houses, though.
But we're not planning on putting housing on the site.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that does restrict further the ability to add...
You know, we might consider...
Five hundred feet from any of the property lines with the existing parcel to certain uses.
Right.
So, congregation of kids being one, one of your existing tenants would be a problem as an example.
Right, and we would have to manage that with our tenants.
It would also affect some of the zoning across the street, because under C D V three, there's certain uses allowed under that zone, so there's, there are certainly, as you probably were, some broader zoning questions.
Right, right, and we're certainly happy to sit and negotiate that and work that through with the town, we think that this is, you know, again, our search is always, what's the highest and best use for the property, we think this is the highest and best use, so we're certainly willing to sit and discuss with the town, any zoning modify, any concerns and any zoning modifications that they may want, that may be desired.
What about soccer fields, can the kids still play soccer?
Yeah, obviously something that I care about, as it exists right now, it is just, just under five hundred feet from the existing facility.
Oh, so no, so the answer is no.
As they exist now, but...
So, you'd have to move along?
Yeah, so there's...
I mean, it's been incredibly generous of them to, to allow this forever and ever and ever anyway, but I was just curious, what would happen to the fields?
But yeah, it's the first question I asked when, when I first met with Jeff.
But that's state law, but that's not a local zoning, that's state law.
Right, right.
And our, our D V A doesn't have the ability to issue warrants for that, so...
Well, it, it depends how it's, it's, because this is a grow site, not a dispensary, so, and I think even the, where they draw the lines are not, you know, is it from the entrance? Is it from, you know, if we go from the entrance to the building where it's grown, it's almost eight hundred feet, if you...
It was, at least largely it was true today, it's property lines, so, so, you go property line to a joint property line, not front of building or where the grow site is, so, so there's some questions around that, there would need...
Right.
So, this is a great conversation, we have a packed agenda tonight, I don't want to spend the entire evening on this, I want to understand what the next steps are, and then we'll go from there, I think, you know, assuming, you know, obviously, you were looking to put an article on the warrant for this year's town meeting, you'll be coming back to us before town meeting to present that article, and then hopefully, you know, have some of these issues and questions that Selectman Watson and the board has brought up, addressed through a business plan, and, and, you know, be able to have a solid understanding of how this is gonna move forward, but, you know, I'll, I'll give the, the board one more round of questions if you have anything, and, but I think, you know...
One last thing, and I'm using your words, you say that you're a resident of North Andover, and I believe you, but you also say that you are working in Israel, so would you be an absentee owner?
Well, we would have, you know, it's, when something needs to be done on the property, nobody calls me.
No, that, I know that, that they don't, I'm sure that they don't call you, I'm sure that...
I wouldn't know what to do.
All that very nice gentleman in the back room, the back, in the middle of the room.
Right, so, the same way we care about the property now, and we manage the property, and we are out looking for opportunities to develop the property, you know, if you're asking me who I'm gonna partner with, and who I'm gonna bring in, I, I honestly do not know how to grow cannabis, I've never grown cannabis in my life, and don't have a clue.
So, you're gonna partner with someone that's on site?
Or, or we're gonna bring in with experienced, there are cultivation firms that have actually been starting up, so we, we will have, you know, and we're looking at several different options on this, the point is, until we have zoning, nobody really wants to spend much time with us, so...
So, the expectation is this would be a home of a five, six, excuse me, citizen petition on the warrant?
Yes.
Right.
We currently have a deadline for mile six for citizen petition.
Okay.
Okay.
I would, I would just, before we were cut off, I would just also get clarity on what exactly happens to those soccer fields, because again, this has to pass town meeting, so I hope that that...
Absolutely.
I mean, that wasn't, wasn't just a single, we hope, I, I really, I would like to see that information, I know that you have a vested interest, but that's, I would have a concrete response to that, because it sounds like there's a difference in interpretation on whether it's property liner from the door.
We will have that figured out before town meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Okay, I'm a little behind, continuing on communications and announcements, we have a watershed informational postcard, Mr. Chair, please.
I just provided you a copy, I've sent that out previously, the residents impacted by watershed, we have provided to the board in the past, probably a year or so ago, we have updated that slightly, and it's, it's due to be sent back out, so I wanted the board to be aware of the fact that it was being reissued, but there's nothing about it that received, we didn't receive any adverse responses or anything like that, I just want the board to be aware that we're redistributing that.
Okay, great, thank you, any questions on it, or any comments? Okay, as the team shuffles out here, we'll continue on, any other communications and announcements from the board tonight?
Happy Valentine's Day, don't forget, and if you forgot, you better get going. CBS is open twenty-four.
What time's the meeting, what time's the meeting end?
I, I said don't, I didn't, I didn't, I gotta fight agenda.
Okay.
But you know me.
Any other communications announcements? Okay, I am gonna use chairman's prerogative to take a bit out of order, I'd like to go to consent items first, since most of them are donations, and I know some folks have been sitting here for, to give a donation for a while, and then we'll take the public hearing after that, so I'm gonna bypass the public hearing for a moment as we go to consent items. So, first on the agenda for consent items is a request of the North End of Little League Annover Little League to use streets in North Annover for the fifth annual opening day parade on my, on May sixth, two thousand seventeen, from eight fifteen to ten a.m. I think Mark Verstine is here to speak to this, so, Mark.
How am I going to follow that?
Well, do you have any marijuana?
Senior bowling marijuana Little League.
Yeah, right.
We can do something at C T.
What a weird.
We'll put a failed sign on there for him. But thank you for the board. This is, we're going on a fifth year, which I can't, can't believe.
So awesome.
Yeah, two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen, it's unbelievable, so.
He gave me permission Saturday, but I guess he'll still show up and throw up.
We'll see, we'll, we'll see what happens. It was just she and I, no one else knows about that invitation.
Hey, I just, I just included her without asking.
This year, trying to go for May sixth, two thousand seventeen, same route, nothing changes at all. It's identical for the past couple of years as well, too. So, this year, softball, challenger, all the divisions from T-ball all the way up to majors. And at the same time, I don't know if you've, if you've driven by the Call of Thomas complex, but Carmo Motus has donated two unbelievable scoreboards out there.
Yeah.
So, at the opening ceremonies, we're going to be dedicating them and unraveling, unraveling those and pulling them all down and have a big ceremony with Charlie here there as well, too.
Like a great day.
Yeah, so.
All right, well, thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second, motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Appointment of Elaine Elmquest to the Sustainability Committee. Do I have a motion or a discussion or?
Elaine's an active young woman in our town. She's originally from Hable. Her mom's a local business owner. She and her husband, who is a lifelong resident, moved here approximately five years ago, and is looking to get involved and inquired about the Sustainability Committee, and is very eager to join. So, I, I would motion approval of her appointment.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You want to do the thank you?
Oh, yes, of course. I know, it's getting to the end, I know.
We have one more.
It is true, we have one more.
Oh, okay, so let's do.
You could wait for your speech.
We don't have.
No, we don't have one more.
No, but I'm going to miss saying this sooner than Lena.
It's not on the agenda, it's not the support. Look, you had, just before the meeting, Lori sent out an email.
We'll do this one, and then we'll discuss the next one.
Oh, that one's, okay. I'm just saying thank you very much, Elaine, because North Annover would grind to a screeching halt without all of our volunteers.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Congratulations, Lori, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for the services, right.
Okay. Let's move down to item E and go through the donations, and then we'll go back to the trash contract, just so we can get these ticked off. So, the first is a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Helen Condra to Veteran Services. Is anybody here to talk about that? We'd like to very much thank Helen for her, her very, very generous donation to Veteran Services. It's a, certainly a very worthy cause. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the list is a donation of a carved oak table from the American Textile History Museum to the Stevens Estate. Do you have a picture of that? I'd like to see that.
Is it in there?
I haven't seen it.
Oh.
I'm sure it is.
I'll, I'll go up there and look at it. All right, do we have a motion?
There's a picture.
Oh, there is a picture?
I have a lot of donations.
Oh, okay. Just go pull that file up.
We're visual learners.
Well, in the meantime, motion to accept that donation.
That's very nice, yeah. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, and then another donation from the Historical Society of a Chippendale Block front secretary from North Annover Historical Society, again to the Stevens Estate.
Oh, yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the donation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's beautiful.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much to the Historical Society for those donations.
Gorgeous, gorgeous.
And, you know, they'll certainly be a beautiful enhancement to the Stevens Estate, and they will be fit right into the whole decor there, I'm sure.
You might need something for town hall. You have anything else?
We'll look around.
Well, after the election, we're going to be donating stands. To town hall.
Who needs a bus? Do we have all those stands?
That's right.
Okay.
So, that's what I was looking for, was a table for the bus, actually. I was looking for it.
That's a good thing, we might, yeah. What are you looking for?
We're going to put it where the safe is going to go, until we figure out what we're doing with the safe. We need something sturdy to put the Evan's bus on. So, when you leave, just take a look at the space.
Okay, let me ask. Something appropriate.
Okay, so next we have a donation of a twenty by twenty tent from Linda and Larry McHugh, again to the Stevens Estate. Well, the Stevens Estate has been a very, has gotten a lot of nice donations tonight. Linda and Larry, did you want to say something? No?
I will. It's actually, it's a sizable tent that is going to be great for, not only for town uses, but for our brides, and it sort of can be used as sort of a gateway to the big tent, and it's a very generous donation, and so we're.
Well, thank you very much.
I think it's great.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
And a letter of thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Larry and Linda. Okay, next we have a request to surplus some youth and recrea, some equipment from Youth and Recreation Services. Do we have a motion or any questions on that?
No, but this is, I mean, I, this is, this is a great opportunity, I think, for Annover and North Annover, where the Annover Skate Park is bigger, gets so much more use. Our North Annover kids would be able to go there, I believe, for free.
Yeah.
Right, for free? And, you know, we're bigger on the hockey side. I think it's just such a win-win.
Good partnership.
Yeah, it's a great partnership between Rick and Billy. Great partnership.
And that's what we were always looking for. All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to jump back up and go into the discussion on the trash contract. Enter, well, I'm sorry, vote to enter into a trash contract in excess of three years. Mr. Manager?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, we have, as has been discussed at the board, certainly a couple times over the last year or so, our trash contract with our existing hauler is expiring at the end of August. We've been going through the process of identifying a replacement vendor. We've communicated and met personally with four vendors over the last couple of months to talk not only about price, but services and the like, focused on folks who had longstanding contracts with communities that are generally in the area. Some of them are national companies and some of them not so national. My recommendation is that we move forward with J R M hauling. We have the opportunity for me to execute a six-year contract, three-year or three-year renewal. But what they provided is a proposal under that scenario was also an additional proposal for a longer agreement. So, instead of executing the contract that was three, three-year term with a three-year renewal, I'm recommending that the board actually give me the authority to enter the ten-year contract for the following reasons. One is that I feel comfortable, given J R M's experience, that I've included their references in your package. They have multiple communities with twenty-plus year relationships with positive service with all of those communities that have seen renewal after renewal, and an opportunity to save additional dollars under the longer agreement. So, the six-year proposal versus the ten-year proposal, in the first six years, the ten-year proposal is more than a hundred thousand dollars less expensive. It should be noted that in year one of the contract, either the six-year or the ten-year proposal, J R M has agreed for fiscal eighteen to match the current cost of hauling and disposing of our trash. Actually, under the ten-year agreement, they match that cost not only in the first year, but also in the second year as well. Should be noted that of the community, the, the vendors we spoke with, J R M's proposal in year ten is actually less expensive than the other proposals in year one.
Interesting.
So, it's a very cost-effective proposal. They have great references. I think it's an opportunity to turn the page and move forward with a vendor who we currently partner with on the recycling side as it relates to the disposal, the facility and P V D. So, I'm looking for the authority to enter a ten-year agreement. In the absence of that, I'll enter a six-year agreement, but I'd certainly appreciate the support to enter a ten-year agreement.
So, this is for discussion purposes only, and then you'll bring back the?
No, this is the agreement. I'm looking for the authority to enter into a ten-year agreement. This is the proposal, and again, what, what the bylaw, the article allows is for me to enter contracts of three and three, which would be six. But if I have to go beyond a three and three-year renewal, I need board of selectmen approval.
Can I ask about the last point? J R M will have a root supervisor check-in on daily, on a daily basis with D P W. We'll handle any daily issues that need J R M site visit.
Yes.
Is that currently a relationship, or is that currently in place with, with our current hauler?
We have a contact person, and that's a pretty common provision, quite frankly. Obviously, it's important that the relationship and the people involved are responsive, but that's a pretty common provision. Yep, I wouldn't have expected that really, quite frankly, in my experience in any agreement. So, I have selected the vendor we're going to use based upon a work with the D P W director, the assistant town manager, interviewed and spoke to those various companies. So, I plan on proceeding with J R M. This is a question of whether we go with a six-year agreement or a ten-year agreement.
So, I'm assuming like performance clauses are often included?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we, we have to break out of the ten-year for poor performance?
Yes.
You know, just, you know, recent history. We have that ability.
Yes. So, there are clauses associated with penalties for lack of performance, the other provisions that are more specific to trash contracts versus other contracts. Again, the difference here is, instead of entering a three and three-year agreement, being able to enter a ten-year agreement gives us the ability to save additional dollars. Otherwise, I would have just proceeded with the three and three.
Right.
But given the opportunity to, one, hold flat the rate for the first two years was enticing, but also the fact that over the first six years, the ability to save, I'm drawing a blank right now, either a hundred and nine or a hundred and nineteen thousand during the first six years.
Over that first six-year period.
Yep, was enticing.
Oh, my question.
I think the concern for me, and maybe I'm misunderstanding you, is that, so you're, you're working on an agreement. I'd just like to see the final copy before I say, yeah, that's, I mean, you've touched upon the highlights, I get that. That's what I'm, I was confused with, but for an agreement of that magnitude over that period of time, I'd like to, to see the final agreement.
It's the same agreement we have today, and it's the same agreement you've approved under a five-year term under the previous vendor as an example. So, we need to come back to you five years ago for the approval of a five-year agreement with northside carting. It's the same agreement, in essence. The dollar values are different from the services that are had.
And I don't, it's not that I don't trust you, I just still think I would like to see it before I say, yeah, let's do this.
Well, that, we're not, that's fair. The agreement exists and it is a public record. I guess I'm looking for the authority to move forward and give some direction to the company in terms of the cost. Are we supportive of entering a ten-year agreement with the cost proposed, or are we supportive of an agreement that is a three and three-year contract that is slightly more expensive?
But that, so you're not asking for us to approve the contracts, like, you're just asking us to move forward with the?
What I need approval is the authority to execute a contract. If this were a three and three and the dollars were the same, I would have already executed that agreement. That's the common practice with every contract in the, in town. I execute contracts on a pretty regular basis, almost daily basis. The difference is if it goes beyond a three and three-year agreement, I need board of selectmen approval.
I have no problem with you moving forward under the negotiations, but I would really like to see the final document, considering that it's a ten-year agreement, and it's involves quite a bit of money. That's all. I'm just covering our bases as the.
And the six-year agreement and the ten-year agreement would have the same language.
Okay, but I just want to see it.
So, can we move to go forward with the ten-year agreement under the condition that we have a final view of the, final contract in there? Is that what you're looking for?
I'll make that motion.
But we have, you're saying we have access to it right, like we can pull it up right now?
We have, you can pull it up right now.
It's a public contract, yep. It's been the same, same terms that existed when you approved it five years ago. That's, I guess, a little bit of a rub for me. Five years ago, it's the same agreement. We're looking to change the name of the hauler and put in these amounts, which are favorable, under the same agreement you approved five years ago. I understood, I'm not sure what authority you'd give me now. I guess I'd have to come back with an agreement.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to authorize you to move into a, a contract in excess of three years, which would, would, how would I word that? Into a ten-year agreement with J R M for the, the, I'm sorry, I don't, I.
I think all you have to do is just say, yeah, just a.
I usually do these better, I'm sorry.
In excess of three years for the purpose of entering into a new solid waste contract.
What he said.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think, further discussion?
I'd just still like to see the final copy, that's all. Yeah. Certainly can negotiate, you can do your job as being done, but I'm, I'm not ready to vote. You're not going to vote on the contract, though, Rosemary, at the end of the day. He's going to vote on the contract. Even if, if we don't give him the ten years, that's all he's asking for. He can sign this contract tomorrow without us. Yes, if it's less than three years.
If it's a three, the six-year agreement of three and three is.
Well, again, I still.
It gives an extra four years.
This gives an extra four years and a savings of a hundred and eight thousand.
All of that, I, I get all of that. I still just think ten years is a long time, and I'd just like to see it.
Correct, understand.
It's the executive authority of the, that's it. So.
Under the terms of the bylaw, under article one, two, or three, whatever is proclaimed, if you do not receive four votes of the board, then it does not pass. That's what the bylaw is.
I'm not looking to be an obstruction.
I'm not asking that you are. I'm, I put this forward and.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, we're missing one member tonight, so we do need a four, we need a vote of four members to move forward with this. So, we have a motion and a second. So, any further discussion?
Point of information is there, if this vote fails, is there, like sometimes when a vote is tabled, it is treated differently than if it fails. If it fails tonight, then is there any repercussions, or just you can bring it back at the next meeting?
Oh, it's not, it's not limited. It's not a public hearing, so it can come up every meeting until.
It's, it's just applying almost a friendly amendment, just saying that you get the final review of it before this, it gets signed, that's all. I don't think that's, honestly, I don't think that's too much to ask, considering it's a ten-year contract.
So, then, do we want to withdraw the motion then and not take the vote today? Because it seems like we're not going to get four votes, it seems, is the current situation.
I could tell you, you will not have my vote until, I just want to see it. A ten-year contract for the town, I'd like to just see it before we, you know. We're not approving the contract, but that, that's my.
We're approving the term, the length of the contract.
We're approving the term.
But what Rosemary is saying, she wants to see the terms of the contract.
Ten years. We're not approving the actual contract. He can sign a six-year tomorrow morning.
Well, if he wants to sign a six-year without the approval of our selectmen.
They don't need the approval of our selectmen.
He doesn't need approval of us, though, is the point, what, tonight. He's just going from six years to ten years to save an additional hundred and eight.
Right, the contract is the contract.
I totally understand what you're saying.
I'm so with you on the ten.
But I don't, I, I think, I'm just trying to make the point so that people aren't confused that we're not actually approving the contract. That's not.
Andrew, what are the repercussions if we don't vote for it tonight?
And, and go forward with the contract.
No, we're approving, we're approving him.
Hold on, let me just, let me get control of this, one second, yeah. Okay. Here's our, to me, here are our options. We, we go forward with the vote tonight, and I'm hearing it's not going to pass. So, we're not going to get four votes tonight. So, my recommendation would be that we withdraw the motion.
Okay.
We take a look at the contract. Our next meeting is the twenty-seventh. I'm going to ask the town manager if there's any time. I'm going to ask the town manager if there's any time.
And I won't be there.
Okay, so that means we need a four-member vote with, with Mr. Stewart in place. I'm going to ask the town manager, is there any time constraints that we have right now that if we don't move forward tonight, is there an issue, is there a, is there a jeopardy of losing this contract or losing these terms? Or can it wait another, until our next meeting on the twenty-seventh?
I'm not aware of any time constraints associated with that. I'm just going to be really clear. I think the reality is if we get into, I respect the comment. It's been inconsistent, quite frankly, with, with everything we've done. We often sign six-year contracts on any number of topics every day across my desk. And so, the, the only consideration I have is whether or not we're going to get into discussions where the contract gets submitted, and then there's a debate about the terms of the contract, because that isn't how this government has operated, quite frankly. It hasn't operated, predates me. So, getting into those, I can understand the concern of our length of contract. We certainly can understand that. We've agreed to twenty-year contracts with solar without review that have negotiated. And so, we're in an area which we haven't typically been, and I understand the significance of it. So, I'm not concerned at this point that the hauler sets to get a little confused by the message. I think they'd be fine. It's more to me in whether or not, I understand exactly what's being requested. Every contract is public. Every contract we have is public. This is the first time I'm being asked to review a contract before I execute it. I provided you the details of that, including the specifics of the proposal. I provided that to the board, which is actually more, more than we typically provide for any vendor contract we have. And, and so, asking to review the contract out of a spirit of openness, I certainly understand it, but it's not consistent with how we're typically doing things.
Okay, I understand that. In the interest of moving forward, I think.
I withdraw.
Okay, so, you're, you're going to withdraw the motion. We will table this until our next meeting then? We've seen what the term.
Well, I think we just withdraw it. I don't think this is a tablely circumstance.
Okay, well, table.
I'll come back to the board.
So, we've seen the terms. We've seen what the money is, I mean, what the, what the costs are over the next ten years. I think we'll take a look at the, the contract, and then next meeting, hopefully, we'll be in a position to vote for that and move forward with this, with executing that contract. I do understand it's a ten-year commitment. It's a long commitment, so let's, you know, I think if, if there's no jeopardy in executing the contract, in waiting another two weeks, then so be it. We'll, we'll do that. So, you withdraw your motion. We'll discuss this again on the twenty-seventh.
Well, yeah. And I'll report back to the board if I've chosen to execute this agreement I waited.
Okay. Okay, so, the hope is that we'll have an opportunity to vote on that ten-year agreement and say, and get that savings. Okay, next on the agenda is the vote to accept national law, one sixty-six, thirty-two, thirty-two A, inspector of wires, inspector of wires working as electrician.
Mr. Chairman, this, we consider this a housekeeping matter. This is something that we have operated under, quite frankly, for quite a period of time. It's very common practice. We've just been researching. We're unable to find a vote in a previous year by a board, by the board of selectmen to accept the statute, so felt it was safest to vote it. It is the way we've operated for, we've looked back, you know, a decade-plus into board meetings and can't find it. But it is, it is common practice that electrical inspectors, as long as they don't inspect their own work, can do work in the local community, as long as it's reviewed by a peer. And so, feel like this is the best way to proceed to make sure we're covered and we don't put our wiring inspectors at any kind of risk from an ethics perspective.
Okay, thank you for that.
Move to accept.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's jump back now to our public hearing for the National Grid and Verizon, New England Joint Petition Salem Street. So, do I have a motion to move into the public hearing?
So, move.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in a public hearing for National Grid and Verizon. Do we have someone here tonight to speak to this? Sir, if you could give your name and title?
Kandobe National Grid representative. This is part of a heat, feeder hardening project to make this electrical system more reliable. And this job, it was just presented to me this morning before storm duty, but basically it's three stub pole locations, which a stub pole straighten, make sure the line is supported so it doesn't fall back the other way. So, they put a stub pole across the street from it to keep the line straight, and it's a safety and reliability issue in general.
And so, there are three poles to support one pole? Is that the plan?
To support the whole line going down the street in different loca, three different locations.
Oh, okay.
And your butters have been notified?
Pardon me?
Your butters have been notified?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Hey, she's asking if your butters have been notified?
I would assume so. This goes, goes back quite some time.
I don't see anything in the package that, any, anything that is opposing it in the package from butters or police.
Did any of you get any feedback about these poles? These are poles that are already installed? Some of you have gotten some calls about poles installed without approval.
Well, these are the ones that are already in. This is a post-request, gotcha. And this is the one that, that, the one pole was removed from the corner of Salem and Bradford Street, or Boxer Street. Okay, so, this is really coming to us after the fact. So, this is a request for approval, poles that have already been put in place.
That's what I was told today.
Okay. You mean, obviously, you're not responsible for that, but that's not the way we like to do things. I mean, obviously, we wanted, we would require that the petition be placed in front of us before the poles are installed. I don't, don't know how this happened. My understanding was there was a subcontractor that went ahead and installed these poles.
Outside vendor, I, I know. That's all I know as well.
Yeah.
Probably no more than I do.
I think, you know, we need to ensure, and Ray, I don't know if this is through you or not, that we get back to these companies and tell them this isn't the way we can do it, you know, but.
Already done.
It's already done, yeah. Okay, so, any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
I actually don't have that.
Moved to grant permission for the, oh, wait, close the hearing. I moved to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay. Motion to close the hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, do I have a motion on the, on the poles?
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept the poles as provided to us by National Grid.
Okay, we have a motion. Let me just make sure we don't need any special verbiage around that. Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're all second. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to move into licensing?
Same old.
Second.
All in favor?
I have, we are now in licensing. So, before us this evening, we have two items on the agenda. We have, or I should say, we have two, two requests. Item A, Merrimack College requests one-day wine and malt licenses for the following three dates, Thursday, February twenty-third, Friday, February twenty-fourth, and Saturday, February twenty-fifth, all three days from six-thirty PM to eleven-thirty PM. All of their information was in order. Do I, I don't see anybody from Merrimack College here this evening. Any questions from the board? Do I hear a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second. Motion made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Second item on the agenda is a request of the Ninety-Nine Restaurant of Boston LLC for change of manager from Leonard Cafri to Gary Spinelli. I see somebody here this evening with a Ninety-Nine T-shirt on, so I'm assuming there's somebody here to speak this evening.
Gary Spinelli, yeah.
How are you, Mr. Spinelli? So, simple change of manager. I don't know if there's any questions from the board? No questions. We are motion to accept change of manager.
Same old.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sitting up, I'm hanging on now.
You should do all those things.
That is it for, that is it for licensing. Do I hear a motion to return to our regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are out of licensing.
Okay. Full business? We have none. New business? The town managers, FY seventeen, recommend a budget.
That should be FY eighteen, so.
Oh, yeah, right, should be FY eighteen.
Yep, it's not a problem. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to submit for review and consideration the fiscal.
We'll get that later.
Nice. Tough place. Fiscal two thousand and eighteen, town managers recommend a general fund and enterprise fund budgets for the town of North Endover. This financial plan was developed with the adopted budget policy statement. As a guidepost, that budget policy statement was adopted by the board of selectmen back in October in determining the priorities that is built on agreed-upon foundations delivering sustainable services and honoring our commitment to stewards to leave the community better off than how we found it. During the five-year forecast back in December, and based on some preliminary estimates from the Revenue and Fixed Cost Review Committee, we determined that the budget increases here would not exceed four percent. It's important to note that the goal in establishing that milestone of budget growth isn't necessarily that each department will come up with four percent, but as a framework for making requests, so that if a department feels like or can justify the need for four percent, or in some cases, more, we move forward with that. But generally speaking, use that as a framework moving forward. It's important to note that our professional staff works diligently to prepare thoughtful and thorough budget requests. This year is no different. We have an extremely professional staff. Their budget requests are certainly understanding of not only the framework that we establish for the budgets, but really understanding the benefit to the town in total when we request things that they need to deliver their services, but don't request things just idly for the sake of doing that. Again, this year, the expectation of the framework was four percent year-over-year. We stayed within that, other than we went to four-point-one percent, but there's some certain reserve transfers that are sort of kicking us over those amounts. It should be noted that on February second, the North Endover School Committee voted to adopt the agreed-upon four percent increase. This is the fifth consecutive year that we have a consensus budget. If this board approves, of course, we'd have a consensus budget if the board of selectmen were approved and ratified this budget to stay within the four percent level. I think that's a great success story, as we all just need to read the various local newspapers and online blogs and other things to realize that it, it really isn't that common for boards of selectmen and town managers' superintendents and school committees to reach agreement on the financial, on the budget moving, you know, this month, this far in advance. So, I appreciate the support the board has historically shown. Same thing with the school committee. I think it's, it's a real tribute to the community, and we should recognize that, because it's not that, that common. We've obviously focused on a plan, a word I mention often, 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 right? And this, and this budget certainly moves forward with that plan that is largely predicated on service stewardship and sustainability, those, the, the sort of mantras that keep us on focus, making sure that we move forward, move the community forward, try to incrementally increase services, and make sure that we are spending the taxpayer money wisely. As has been said in the financial forecast, we average somewhere around seventy, between seventy-five and seventy-seven percent of all of our funding from the local property taxpayer, and we should always be mindful of that. Two thousand and sixteen was a particularly good year in which all of the efforts that this board has certainly supported came through with the triple-A bond rating, something I think we should very part of, something that doesn't happen often, and hopefully will be something, a condition we find ourselves many years to come. We certainly don't want to move backwards in that regard. It should be noted of some of the specifics that we have made a conscious effort to fund more reserves than most communities, an OPEB stabilization, a capital stabilization, a general stabilization fund. We also have an OPEB trust fund, and.
That's stabilization.
That's also stabilization. We'll just keep on rolling stabilization. And this year, in a slightly different bent, but certainly keeping the spirit of moving forward and finding creative ways to sustain funding. I'm going to recommend in the form of an article that we create a revolving fund for curriculum funded directly by the Medicare reimbursement, something that I think is important. It will mean, moving forward, that there could be upwards of a quarter million dollars a year in the school budget dedicated toward curriculum. This budget also supports the capital plan that this board has previously approved. That capital plan contains not only significant roadway improvements that are in the capital plan provided in detail, but also the facility master plan, which this year has a modification or variation from, from what it had started at, and includes not only the design phase of a new senior center, but also the construction of a kindergarten facility, as the board is aware, a six million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand-dollar kindergarten facility that, that starts to take the steps toward making sure we can reduce average classroom size at the elementary level. That's largely funded, as the board knows, or at least two-thirds funded from our reserves. And we just wouldn't have had that flexibility in years past, quite frankly, to accomplish that, so it's a tribute to the board and the town that we're in that position. Specifically to revenues this year, the budget calls for ninety-five million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars, or four-point-one percent increase. Of that total, that's, excuse me, that's about three-point-eight million dollars over the previous year budget of approximately ninety-two million. A large part of that, about three million, is property taxes. Local receipts make up another four hundred and fifty thousand, and it's important to note, those are the largest sort of two categories relative to that from the revenue side. And the offsetting the revenues is an equal amount of ninety-five million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars in expenses. A fairly large percentage of that, quite frankly, is what we call non-departmental fixed costs, health insurance being a big example of that, retirement. Our retirement appropriation this year is going up three hundred and thirty-two thousand, a seven-point-five percent. It'll go up the same, seven-point-five to eight percent each and every year of the next twenty years, and we should be mindful of that. Again, we've done an effective job with health insurance maintaining costs. We're assuming this year that the health insurance cost increase will be six hundred and fifty-six thousand. That's significantly below what it historically would have been if we hadn't switched to the GIC. We're still enjoying the benefit of that transfer to the GIC, and I think will for some years to come. It's relieved a level of pressure in terms of our budget constraints. Should be noted that workers' compensation is an area of concern right now. We've seen nearly a two-hundred thousand dollar increase from three hundred to five-hundred thousand over the last two years. We've seen an increased number of claims, and we continue to work with the various departments to find ways to increase training, to reduce the workers' compensation, compensation costs moving forward. In the capital reserves area, which is also part of the non-departmental fixed costs, we remain focused on funding the capital stabilization fund. This year, I'm going to be requesting three hundred and fifty thousand be placed into that fund. That's the second straight year. It'll be three hundred and fifty thousand, which is a positive step toward making sure we're putting money on pay-as-you-go capital. We're going to recommend the one hundred and fifty-nine thousand to the general stabilization fund to keep forward with the reserves, as was been our practice. And what I also recommend, two hundred thousand dollars be transferred from free cash into the OPEB trust fund, a fund created a couple of years ago that's actually invested by a state agency on our behalf, so we can earn higher than the average rate that a municipality would earn. We have fifty thousand additional in the budget, in addition to that two hundred thousand, and although not in the budget, I'm going to recommend to the board that we transfer a portion of the OPEB stabilization funds into the OPEB trust fund, so we can yield a better rate of return. That'll be come forward in the form of an article. It's not a budget transfer.
That's the five hundred thousand?
It's a million dollars now. We'd originally put into a stabilization as sort of an agreement that that would be the more flexible choice. I think we're at the point that we understand the benefits of a trust fund several percentage points higher in terms of return, so that'll be up to the board to decide if you want to support that article and move, start to move portions of that stabilization into the trust fund. But I think it's at least worth a discussion. On school and municipal spending, now, the school department again approved the budget at four percent increase. The aggregate municipal spending is one-point-six percent. It's a little bit misleading in the sense, if you look at the larger departments, specifically police and fire, and you add in the public safety reserves, they're a little over three-point-eight percent. Each department went up almost exactly the same amount of money. So, the police, fire, and schools are strongly aligned, pretty common, because those are the departments that obviously have the greater stressors on, on needs for expenses. Other departments have a tendency to vary somewhat dramatically. We've seen for the fourth or fifth consecutive year, increasing the staff incrementally at the library. Library has seen the largest percentage of staffing increase, headcount increase over the last four years of any department, I would argue, including the schools, trying to move them back to where they were sort of pre-2003. I think we're at about the 2002 staffing levels now. The clerks office will see a dip, primarily the fact that there's been, obviously, there'll be less elections this year than there were last year. So, in aggregate, that number is up 1.6%, but from department to department, it can vary fairly dramatically. On a staffing level, the schools in the approved budget included a 5.25% full-time equivalent increase. Three of those are elementary teachers, one of which was funded in last year's budget as a 1 FTE increase, and a K-6 math coach, and a .25 FTE in the reading intervention. They also needed to add one full-time equivalent employee as we made the conscious decision to move away from the unified payroll department. We gave it a shot, it just didn't, quite frankly, work for us. Municipal funding is up 1.52%, largely again .33 off the library being a portion of that, and the shared budget moving a staff member again back into our side has added one. So, we have seen generally a nominal or nearly no change in the staffing headcount on the town side. As relates to support services, which is those shared services, we've seen a pretty standard increase largely out of the normal pressures you'd expect, nothing extraordinary in that category. As relates to the enterprise funds, you'll notice that other than the dollars that we're using to fund ongoing capital projects, the water enterprise fund is assumed to increase by 2.2% and the sewer enterprise fund to increase by .69%. Both of those extremely small percentages. And I would suggest that if the water and sewer budgets are adopted by this board and then town meeting, again, I would be recommending no change in water and sewer rates for, I'm losing track of the year, six.
Seventh year.
This is year six. So, I think it's good news, we're managing those well, we're managing expenses. The interesting thing is by driving down the debt service, our costs are going down, our retained earnings are going up, and we're using those retained earnings to invest in the pay-as-you-go capital, which means we're then not having to incur debt again. So, we're seeing some really great results as a function of that, and a lot of folks deserve credit. But, but we see nothing on the horizon which will make us vary from, from that sort of steadiness of being able to keep rates level. Stevens Estate is going to have another positive year, and they're using a portion of those funds to reinvest into the asset. Obviously, there's been good results in the last couple of years of Stevens Estate, and I think we're all very happy about that because for years drained on the budget to a certain extent. It would send a little bit of a warning that we continue, although we're investing the facility in the long term, we've got a couple of million dollars' worth of improvements up there, and this board will have to make a decision as to how it wants to proceed. How do we fund the $2 million-plus dollars' worth of improvements moving forward? Because I think the Stevens Estate, as well as it's doing, can't fund that level of cost, quite frankly. If they're investing at $100,000 to $150,000 a year, that's great news, and I think they're doing a great job in operating it. But the bigger overall cost, the board's going to have to really decide or best to proceed in that. In conclusion, the development of this recommended budget would not have been possible without the commitment of all the departments really looking at every line and presenting realistic budgets to us, making our jobs, and I mean, Ray and I and Lynn easy in a sense that they come in the meetings and they're, and they're thoughtful about what they request, and, and we very much appreciate that. I think, again, overall, the budget is reasonable. It doesn't, there's nothing outrageous on, on any side of the budget, and it recommends an opportunity, again, to move forward in our consensus environment, and hopefully for years to come, move forward with a consensus budget that, that allows us to deliver excellent services at a reasonable cost.
On the workers' comp, why, is there any reason that you think that we're having a bit of a spike?
Yeah, we've seen some addition.
In comparison to maybe other communities?
Yeah, I don't know about his comparison to other communities. It can be a little bit of a wave on that. So, we've seen increased claims, we pay for that on a claim-by-claim basis, so we've seen increased claims. What we typically do in that case is to look at the claims and see if there's some kind of trend. We do see some areas where we think we could improve training on the job, workplace training, and so we're.
That's what I was concerned about.
In the process of looking at some workplace training as, as a way of maintaining that cost. Yep, so, without getting into some level of detail that I can't share.
No, no, you can't.
Certainly, from a training perspective, we're looking at some training to address that.
Yeah, we don't want people getting hurt.
So, all on today, any questions, ma'am?
Any questions?
So, this is the best of the home watching to actually have a computer open and be thumbing through this budget as we go?
Slowly thumbing, yes, it's a, it's a big file.
Mousing through, mousing through, arrowing through it, I guess.
An arrow?
Oh, yeah.
Click, clicky.
And so fast a computer is, I guess.
I don't know, we have that, the high-fiving.
So, this would, you need a motion to move forward with the light to change so that the finance committee can.
Exactly.
Do their deliberations.
Yes.
So, so moved, that we moved on towards the, to accept the budget, subject to review or change so that, again, the finance committee can.
Okay. I think the chatter identifies 30 days, but typically you guys act within a minute and a half.
Second.
Okay, so, a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Thank you for your time, Mr. Helfing. I know that I bothered you on the phone in person, so I appreciate that.
Never a problem.
And I sent you a few emails, so I appreciate it and.
Except all communications we can.
Again, you know, just for the folks at home, this is, again, an award-winning budget. So, we have won the distinguished budget presentation award, it's presented at North Endover. Or, I'm sorry, this is fiscal year 2015.
That's right, we always put the last one in there.
Okay.
That's correct. We can't win the award until after it's approved by town.
But anyway, so, a great job to you and your whole staff in preparing this, and thank you very much. So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, no one? All set. So, moving along, next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Vice Chair, do you have anything tonight?
Vice Chair.
Mr. Santilli's got a word, not mistaken.
Oh, right.
March 29th, you can knock yourself out.
Stan Limper, 43, Stone, Cleveland. I just wanted to add my thanks to what you said about the town manager. He mentioned that we've had consensus budgets for, it's certainly his term here, and much of the, the benefit that we've received in, in our budgets and in the budgeting process is really due to him, his process. It's been, it's made this a rational, very helpful, very supportive activity for us on the school department side, and we really appreciate it, and I could never thank him enough for everything he's done to rationalize the budget process. So, let me give you my personal thanks as a member of the North Endover School Committee.
I'll let my kids know you think I'm rational. I may get some dispute on that.
Okay, any other, no, okay, no one else here? All right, town manager report, ask the manager, any questions for the manager that have come in? Nothing?
We get a fair amount of questions, but, so, first of all, let me, under this category, note two things. One is that Ms. Midely and, and three others are working diligently to add those artifacts and other pieces of art to the building to make sure we can get to a grand opening. I think, I think it's getting, coming along, and it is appreciated, and I think the space already looks great, and it will be, look great, more great, if that's possible moving forward. I would also say that we certainly get communications about snow and ice. I think that the DPW is working hard to address all of those. Sometimes it's difficult with wet snow and consecutive storms. I thought the roadways today, by and large, were certainly effective. I should note that the removal of snow, as we typically do around Water Street and Main Street, Mr. Valencourt raised this question with me, will be handled tomorrow night and Wednesday night. We'll start to do some of the removal to clear up around Main Street as we do.
Or to take it off.